Good afternoon and welcome to CDVG Advisory Committee Special Meeting. Today is September 8, 2025. The time is 1:38. The roll call, please.
Committee members, Ani, Caribbean.
Here.
Kiñones Gabrielian. Vice Chair Manukian. Chair Avadiscian.
Here.
Okay, the agenda for the September 8, 2025 Special Meeting of the CDVG Advisory Committee was posted on or before Friday, sorry, September 5, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Next is item two, oral communications. And.
Do we have anybody in the call?
We do not have any speaker cards or callers.
Chair Avadiscian.
Yes.
Chair Avadiscian, members of the committee, I would like to welcome our newest Advisory Committee member, Member Leah Ani. She has been a Glendale resident for the last 15 years. She has two bachelor's degrees, one in secondary education and the second one in cybersecurity. She's currently the president of Family First Foundation Corporation. It's a nonprofit organization that provides educational opportunities for underserved youth. They also develop programs serving 1,200, over 1,200 students annually, including college preparation workshops, STEM initiatives, and focusing on equitable access to resources through strategic communication and collaborations. She's also very active in Glendale PTA. She's, has been the president since 2022, and she was also the vice president between 2021 and 2022. I do like to welcome Committee Member Ani to the board. Staff is looking forward to working with you as well as the committee members.
So, welcome. Welcome, welcome.
Do I need to share something, or?
Sure, if you like.
Yeah, so, thank you for the warm welcome. I truly appreciate it. And when I had opportunity to be appointed in this position, it's, I've looked at it as a great opportunity to serve our community because I believe there is so much work to be done. But at the same time, we need people that can really oversee and be part of this commission is, I think, for me, as a resident and as a parent, and seeing different initiatives that has been in place and working in a nonprofit, I think I can really provide something of substance. And I think programs that moving forward can really cater to the needs of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone? Any comments?
Well, I just want to welcome you on board. I'm sure you'll be a great asset to us. It's always good to have five full seats, so, welcome.
Just ditto and welcome.
Likewise, welcome. I just tell you, I told you off-camera, but I'll tell you again, this committee has a lot of passion, all our members here right now. I'm sure along the line you'll get that, with all our charity organizations that they come in front of us, they apply for different grants and different programs. We all have good passion, all the organizations that come in, they have a full heart, what they do, they believe in. And we do also believe in, and that's how we work together to give them the fundings as needed or as much as we have. But at the end, for me especially, I know everybody else feels the same thing, it's very self-fulfilling when you see these nonprofits doing so much for our organizations, for our community throughout. And a lot of them, they come and ask, you know, even for a small money, sometimes $10,000, but they come and ask for that just to be able to help more so throughout the community and all of who needs it. So, it's a good feeling to have, to be able to give little bit, although it's not our money. But then again, it's the way that it's organized, it's a good feeling to be part of this. And I personally always look forward for this commission. I don't think I can serve better in any other commission than I do here. So, welcome, enjoy it, have fun, ask a lot of questions, but we'll tell you when you need to stop the questions. Joker side, yeah, welcome. What's next, please?
Chair Avadiscian, members of the Advisory Committee, the next item on the agenda is Reports for Information Only. However, four, I'm sorry, 4A is the selection of the CDVG Advisory Committee officers as an action item. Did you want to bring that up, or did you want to go through the Reports for Information Only first?
The committee's, well, I'm okay either way.
Item three is Reports for Information Only. At A is Status of Active CDVG Capital Improvement Projects.
Chair Avadiscian, members of the Advisory Committee, we have a CDVG overview of city and community capital improvement projects. This is a status report where we present to you what is pending, what has been completed, and what is forthcoming. So, we'll go ahead and get started with this PowerPoint. Under city capital improvement projects, we have quite a few in the pipeline. We just funded Elk Mini Park Playground Project and Pelenconey Park Renovation Project. There's also Pacific Natural Grass Project, and then Pacific Edison Artificial Turf Replacement Project. And then a joint project, even though they're separated, but they are joint. It's the Pacific Park Playground and Pool Shade Structure Improvement Project and Splash Pad. And then under community capital improvement projects, in 2526, the committee funded Lexington Office Historic Building Preservation and Rehab Project for the YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena. There are two projects that are pending in 2425, which is the Glendale Community Center Roofing Project for Catholic Charities. And then the Bathroom Renovation Project for Home Enotmen Ara Main Campus. And then last but not least, in 2122, we funded the Glendale Youth Center CIP Project with the Armenian Cultural Foundation. So, let me go ahead and get started with Elk Mini Park, which was just funded, $400,000. The scope of work is a 13,500-square-foot facility proposing to design and install a playground replacement with poured-in-place rubber outdoor surfacing and integrated shade. Currently, Great Western Recreation is the vendor and installer in developing the playground design. Now, there is a goal of taking the initial concept designs to the Parks and Rec Commission this fall. And then the goal is getting City Council approval for this design by December of 2025. Installation is anticipated by spring of 2026. We're hoping for a very quick turnaround on this particular project. Next, we have Pelenconey Park Renovation Project. We have $100,000 in CDVG funds for this project. It's going to be addressing park infrastructure deficiencies, replacement of backstop fencing, replacement of asphalt around the baseball field and basketball court, replacing and repairing bleachers, and then replacement of irrigation in the south end of the park. Currently, staff is scoping the fencing and asphalt works onsite, and then prioritization of safety and burial, barrier removal. Construction is anticipated this end of fall, probably around October, November, and then completed by spring of 2026. And this will be done by city staff. Next, we have Pacific Park Natural Grass Project. Pacific Park Natural Grass Project has about $1.3 million in CDVG funding. The scope of work includes regrading and rebuilding natural turf surface on the Pacific Park Ball Field, new drainage and catch basins for water percolation, new irrigation, expansion of center field, new fencing and outfield retaining walls. Status update, David Volt's design, these are landscape architects, were hired to complete the redesign. To date, they've provided about 60% of the drawings. 100% of the drawings and completion of plan check is anticipated in late fall 2025. Construction is anticipated in the summer of, or even fall of 2026. So, this project is a little behind in schedule. Next, we have Pacific Edison Artificial Turf Replacement Project. These sit kind of, as you can see, close to each other, across from each other. The available budget is $500,000 in CDVG funding, with the remaining funding coming from General Fund, City General Fund budget. The scope of this project is replacing the artificial turf at the PAC Edison Multipurpose Field, improving the field drainage to address stormwater runoff issues, increasing the north fence height for safety, addressing spectator seating conflicts with field use, new privacy screening and new field striping, and then evaluation of current turf system to determine ideal solutions for fields, since the city will opt to switch to organic in-field options. Project scope is included under two phases to implement this project. Design contract was awarded to Verde Design in May of 2024. 100% of the construction drawings have been completed back in March of 2025. Project permits were submitted at that time and received for Phase 1 of the project. We had a notice of inviting bids released in April with no bids received. Then, we did a re-release of notice inviting bids in July, and we received five bids. Award is actually forthcoming. They chose the contractor. The award is forthcoming in October 2025, and we plan to break ground very soon. Phase 1 is anticipated to be completed in spring of 2026. So, then we have the Playground and Pool Shade Structure Project along with Pacific Park Splash Pad. This project is pretty much completed except for, and we'll get into that a little bit. There's about $3.2 million in total project funding. CDVG put in about $1.6 million of that. The scope of work for this particular project was the installation of shade structure at two playground areas, three permanent shade structures at Pacific Community Pool Deck area. And then let me get to, sorry, the Splash Pad. The Splash Pad also had replacement of current Splash Pad water feature, additional amenities, increasing the size of the Splash Pad area, and then upgrading, updating the surface and surfacing and water filtered and recirculated through the LA County Public Health requirements. And then the restroom improvements were done along with expansion. Now, this project was completed in fall. The Splash Pad was installed in fall of 2024 along with the shade and pool structure. But right now, there are remaining site improvements, and this was due to the January winds. We are working on lighting and safety around that area, and they're going to be completed this fall of 2025. So, this project is actually going to be closing out this December of 2025. So, this is pretty much a completed project at this point. I'll move on to community agency capital improvement projects. The first one is the Lexington Office. This is the YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena. This is a historic building. Their scope of work, they received $630,000 in CDVG funds this past February to renovate their facility, which includes electrical panel updates, HVAC roof replacement, and then relocation of existing electrical panels, replacing and upgrading five HVAC units, installation of heat pumps, use of equipment to meet Glendale code requirements, flat roof replacement, replacement of gutters and downspouts. At this point, the contract between the city and the agency is pending. We met, staff met with the architect and the agency. We are working on a SHPO and environmental review process with them. The architect is refining the scope of work and preparing construction drawings, and the project is anticipated to be completed next year in either spring or summer. Just as background, this project is also receiving HUD funding from HUD Congressional Funding. Therefore, they're working on the scope of work to ensure all criteria is met, both through CDVG and through the Congressional Funding, even though it's coming from the same federal department. Next, we have Catholic Charities of Los Angeles. This is the Glendale Community Center Improvement Project. This is a roofing project. They have $268,000 in funding. This is the demolition and disposal of 7,500 square feet of existing roof, installation of mid-roof cool system with 20-year warranty, testing and inspections, electrical abatement mechanical relocation, and then roof installation. This agency was awarded funding in 2024. The contract is complete. Agency prepared drawings and permit set drawings are ready. Bidding phase was completed this March, and agency has awarded their general contractor, and the agreement is also finalized. So, they are going to be starting construction next month. So, this project is a very quick turnaround as well. It'll most likely be completed by this December of 2025. Next, we have Home Enotmen Ara Main Campus. This is their bathroom renovation project. The bathroom renovation project received $433,000 in CDVG funding to demo the existing floors, interior walls, partitions, plumbing fixtures, accessories. This is going to include plumbing work, replacing existing system connecting to the main drain, camera work, and finishing the plumbing framing, electrical with new wiring, exhaust fans for six restrooms, sound installation, new drywall, new tiling for the flooring, and then new wall tile at four inches height on all walls and doors, adjust door swings to accommodate ADA as well. The agency is currently working with City of Los Angeles. As for those of you who don't know, Home Enotmen Ara sits in the City of Los Angeles border, although 95% of their clientele that they serve live in the Glendale area. So, they've submitted their drawings to the City of Los Angeles. They are waiting for that approval. They're going to incorporate design changes to the updated drawings, and then specifications are pending. Now, we are anticipating a bid walk once all this is returned. We're anticipating a bid walk in late October, and then we're anticipating completion of this project by spring of 2026. And then last but not least, we have the Armenian Cultural Foundation. This is the Glendale Youth Center Project. The Glendale Youth Center Project received $116,000 in funding, and this was the 500-square-foot library area remodel, which included removal of existing flooring, including the hallway, repairing of substrate, removal of water fountain, patch and repair, repairing of the wall, installation of new flooring, including hallway, painting, all walls and ceilings, removal of existing light fixtures, and the addition of new lighting fixtures and wiring, installation of built-in shelving and acoustic panels, and then the addition of new awning outside entrance. Now, this project was executed between the city and the agency. Agency hired their general contractor in July of 2025. The project has already completed construction and is drawing down funds. So, then, all we're waiting on now is a notice of completion. We met with them last Friday, as a matter of fact. And we're just waiting on notice of completion from LA County. And once that is filed, this project will be done probably at the end of this month. And we wanted to give you some pictures of the before and after. So, this is a before-and-after shot of this project. Here's another before-and-after. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you for the report. Any questions? Yes.
Thank you very much for the report. Brought back a lot of good memories. We have $906,842 total in program years funding. And I know that, I mean, the majority of them, they're spread all over the place. But are any of those at any risk because they are from program, from prior years' program? And it's almost $1 million.
Wow, what a great question. Chair Avadiscian, members of the Advisory Committee, Committee Member Kiñones Gabrielian, we actually have a report that we'll be presenting to you this afternoon, item 4C, I believe. And that will give you kind of a snapshot of where we are and what we'd like to do as staff to not have to lose funds, not to have, not to have to give back CDVG funds or be untimely. We will give you a very comprehensive overview of that this afternoon, and then we can discuss that during that item. But yes, we have considered that absolutely.
Any other question?
Yeah, I have a couple of small ones. The Pacific Park and the Pacific Edison are within the same location. Is that what they are, right? Just the turf is called differently?
Yes. And the Pacific, Pacific Park, it's basically a 10.1-acre complex. So, you have the school, Edison Elementary School, the library, and the park, and the community center.
So, when the, I remember council decided to do natural grass, but not the soccer field. Will it remain artificial? Is that what it is?
Yes. The soccer field that is located at Edison Elementary is currently an artificial turf soccer field. The end of life has reached. That field that we currently have, the carpet, was installed in 2014. So, we want to replace that carpet with new carpet, the shot turf that Ms. Gabrielian was talking about. The Little League Field is natural turf. Staff was recommending to change the natural turf to artificial turf, but back in 2022, council voted on keeping it natural. So, we're working on renovating the field to, and keeping it natural turf.
And the part that we had the damage due to wind, was there any natural disaster or anything assigned by the state or anything like that to get funding for those?
The 16, I believe, we're going to be replacing 16 lights throughout the park facility. And some of them, some of the lights were, I believe, did we go ahead and submit for FEMA for those, or no? I'm not sure.
The, no, they were included as part of the Pacific Splash Pad Playground Project, so they weren't submitted to FEMA.
And I think, and lastly, this communication you're having with agencies throughout this, which is great. They give you detail. We read them. It's great stuff. Is there a way, by the time we get to the meetings, we can also be told of the communication? So, at least if there are stuff we can help ahead of time, especially the ones that are behind schedule, which some of them are, to be able to bring it up before it actually comes to a meeting? So, we save time to say that aspect. So, it's more of transparency of what communication is happening throughout the agencies.
Chair Avadiscian, members of the Advisory Committee, I'd have to defer to Iris and see how that, how we could do that without... Are we even allowed to have all of you included in that conversation? Or, I'm not sure how that would work.
Obviously, not in a detailed communication, just issues.
We could bring the details of communication. We could bring the details of communication, and if you feel comfortable. We do have, in November, we will be inviting you to visit these sites. And maybe that's a good time to have those discussions with the agencies and see where they are in their projects. And that could be a good way to do it.
That's a year later, that's a delay of one year by time, especially the ones who are behind. By the time we visit them and ask them questions, they're already one year behind. So we're trying to beat the clock to be able to save time. Thank you, these are my questions.
I have one more. I'm sorry. Thank you. And I, I hope I didn't miss it. But I, I know that, were you discussing the Pacific Edison, excuse me, Artificial Turf Replacement Project?
Yes.
You were, right? Because it says, it says that staff is still in the process of deciding whether it's going to be turf or natural. In the report, it says that. Or have you already decided?
Which report?
The...
What?
The Pacific Edison Turf Replacement Project under status. Let's see.
Replacement Project.
Are you, Committee Member Kinyonas Gabrielian, are you referring to the comment that says "An evaluation of the current turf system will be performed to determine the ideal solution"? That line?
Yes.
That's referring to the type of infill for the artificial turf, like crumb rubber versus coconut husk versus something else? Not necessarily artificial turf versus natural grass?
Okay, so it's going to be turf.
It will be turf, yes. So the, the field currently is artificial turf. It will be replaced with artificial turf. It's just, it won't be the crumb rubber that's currently used. So the infill options, it's referring to what will replace the crumb rubber?
Perfect, dummy. Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, we're moving away from crumb rubber. We're using organic infill, which is, they say it's safer to use as well. It will reduce the heat island effect instead of using the black, the black recycled tires.
Yes, yeah. Remember, my kids' shoes almost melted on that turf. Okay, thank you. Good.
I have a, oh, go ahead. All right, so, thank you. Because, yeah, it was a big problem with the, the rubber. Yeah, it's kind of grabbed the heat. Anyway, I have a question about the Lexington Office Historic Building Preservation. And we know, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a preservation project, correct? Or expanding, there's another, the WCA Rehab Project, right? So with a timeline given, it seems like, I think, it requires a little bit of planning in terms of the architecture, because you want to retain the original, you know, building itself. And that requires probably a lot of contingency plans to accomplish that. And it seems like, how realistic is the timeline that says it's going to be done, anticipated completion in 2026, that we haven't even proposed an architectural?
That's a great question. So when the YWCA came and gave us the proposal, they had already received funding from HUD for their Congressional Grant. So they're working off of that proposal funding. At the time, they anticipated spring, summer of 2026. But we met with, and that would be Ms. Kabanjin, and I had met with the architect and the executive director last week. And now we know that it's going to be most likely pushed back because they're still working on the scope and trying to tighten the scope of work and figuring out what each funding source is going to pay for, in a sense. With that being said, this happens often. These reports were already turned in at the time of that meeting. So we had to stick with what our information was at the time. So there are some updates, yes. So if I were to be giving you a real, more real-life status update, it would probably be winter of 2026. And SHIPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, can take months to two months to come back and give them an update on that as well.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one again.
Just a quick question regarding the park projects, for parks that are being used for teams, sports, and things like that. Does the, does the city consider in scheduling of the starting of the work, the use of the park and the seasons of the tournaments?
Very good question. So basically, what we're, what the plan is, is when Edison Field Project starts, we're going to move the current users to Fremont Park. We hope that Fremont Park will open in mid-October. So once when we open a Fremont Park, they'll move over to Fremont. And then when the project at Pacific is completed or Edison is completed, then those users using Fremont Park will move back to Pacific. And then we'll go ahead and have Fremont open for the teams that are on the waiting list.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a great question and a great concept. Thank you. Moving on. All right, thank you. If no other question, what's next, please?
Let me try that with the mic. 3B is Year-end Performance Report for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Social Services Programs.
Chair of DCN, members of the Advisory Committee, Ms. Tomer Kabanjin, our project manager, will be giving you an overview of our year-end status report for 2425. I do want to commend both Ms. Kabanjin and Ms. Sarafyan, who's back at the office, for really working very hard with this year especially with these agencies. They had some challenges, and she'll get into the report numbers, but did want to thank them for doing such a great job this year. Ms. Kabanjin.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, CDBG committee members and city staff. There are a total of 11 agencies we partner with on social service projects. Throughout the fiscal year, we work closely with these agencies to collect quarterly reportings. This process allows us to track documentation and monitor the total number of individuals served by each agency and the City of Glendale. I'm happy to announce that all of our partner agencies have successfully reached their goals, with some who have overachieved the goals. Today, my PowerPoint presentation will showcase the year-end performance and accessory rates report for all, for all the agencies that are making a meaningful impact in our community. The first agency we have is Essentia, a program called Emergency Housing Program. Proposed number to be served is 13 individuals. Agency has reached their goal. Total CDBG funding was awarded $10,498. Agency has spent down their grant. There are two outcomes for this program. First outcome is by the end of the fiscal year, five out of 13, that's 38% of individuals, will exit the program to permanent housing. Status to report to is they have reached six out of 13. That's 46% accomplished. Second outcome is by the end of the fiscal year, nine out of 13, 69% individuals enrolled would maintain or increase their source of income upon exit from the program. Status to report to is 12. Their goal is 13. They have accomplished 92%. The next agency we work with is Catholic Charities of Los Angeles, a program called Loos and Fishes Program. Proposed number to be serviced 35 households. Agency has overachieved by assisting 37 households. Total CDBG funded is $28,898. Agency has spent down their grant money. There are two outcomes for the program. The first one is, of the 35 households served by the program, 26 households will receive aid in the form of goods from the Food Pantry Rental Assistance Program and/or Utility Assistance Program within three months of entering the program. Status to report to is they have reached 37. They have overachieved from 26. That gives them 142% accomplishment. A second outcome of the 35 households served by the program, 11 households will maintain an active link to accelerated services, mainstream resources, behavioral, mental, and physical health services, substance abuse services, employment services, and legal services. Status to report to is they have reached 37 out of 11. That's 336% accomplishment. Next agents we work closely with is Glendale Youth Alliance, a program called Youth Employment Program. Proposed number to be served is 16. Agency has overachieved by assisting 18 youths. CDBG funds awarded is $15,498. Agency has spent down their grant money. The two outcomes are the following. The first one is, of the 16 youths served, 100% will earn income by working a minimum of 100 hours. Status to report to is they have assisted 18 out of 16. That gives them 113% accomplishment. Second outcome of the 16 youths served, six youths will be referred to community agencies based on the individual needs. Status to report to is they have reached nine out of five. That gives them 180% accomplished. Next agency we work with is Home Again Los Angeles, a program called Crisis Aid for Homeless Families Program. Proposed number to be serviced 30 households. Agency has overachieved by assisting 57 households. CDBG funds awarded is $15,498. Agency has spent down their grant money. The two outcomes are the following. The first one is, of the 30 underpaid households served by the program, 20 will be enrolled into crisis housing within the first 30 days of connecting to Home Again Los Angeles. Status to report to is they have reached 57 out of 20. That's 285% accomplishment. Agency has again overachieved. The second outcome is, of the 30 underpaid households served by the program, 20 will transition into stable housing. Status to report to is agency assisted 57 out of 20. That's 285% accomplishment. Next agency is Door of Hope, a program called DV Mental Health and Case Management Program. Proposed number to be serviced 32 participants. Agency has met their goal. CDBG funds awarded is $20,498. Agency has spent down their grant money. The two outcomes are the following. The first one is, of the 32 adults, children, and teens served by the program, 24 will report improved mental health as indicated by decreased anxiety and/or depression in adults and increased socio-emotional growth and coping skills in children and teens by way of assessments by end of the fiscal year. Status to report to is they have achieved 24 out of 24. That's 100% accomplishment. The second outcome is, of the 22 adults served by the program, 16 will increase their income and/or savings as measured by case managers on a quarterly basis. Status to report to is they have assisted 23 out of 16. That's 144% accomplished. Next agency we work with is Housing Rights Center, a program called Glendale Fair Housing Program. Proposed number to be serviced 275 households. Agency has reached assisting 262 households. Total CDBG funding is $10,000. Agency has spent down their grant. The two outcomes are the following. The first one is HRC will host two housing rights workshops for the City of Glendale, one for tenants and one for landlords, and will measure the effectiveness of the workshops using survey evaluation forms, demonstrating 85% of attendees will rate the workshop as being useful. Status to report to is they have reached two, meeting their goals. The second outcome is HRC will file a minimum seven fair housing complaints by Glendale residents to the extent supported by law and will aim to find successful disposition for a minimum of three fair housing cases opened for investigation. End of the fiscal year to report to is four. Their goal was third, three. Next agency we work with is Armenian Relief Society of Western USA, a program called Community Outreach Project. Proposed number to be served is 200 individuals. Agency has overachieved by assisting 207 individuals. Total funds for this project is $65,498. I do not, it does say 84.21% expended. However, per this PowerPoint, the agency has spent down their grant money. The two outcomes are the following. The first one is, of the 90 seniors enrolled in ESL classes, 81 will demonstrate improved English language competence by 40% determined through pre- and post-test assessments. Status to report to is they have reached assisting 93. Their goal was 81. Second outcome of the 35 individuals who receive employment services, 21 individuals will secure employment within three months of intake. End of this, status to report to is 20. Their goal was 21. They have reached 95%. Next agents we work is Committee for Armenian Students and Public Schools, CASP, a program called Intervention Prevention Clinical Group Counseling. Proposed number to be serviced 44 students. Agency has reached assisting 42 students. Total CDBG funding is $34,498. Agency has spent down their grant. The two outcomes are the following. First is, of the 44 students served at two sites, 35 will show significantly reduced incidence of aggressive behavior by end of the fiscal year by way of pre- and post-test. End of the year, status to report to is 40. Their goal was 35. That gives them 114% accomplishment. Second outcome of the 44 students served at two sites, 35 will show significant improvement in following directions and academic responsibilities by way of psychologists. Notes, progress reports to show students' progress throughout the progress activity by end of the fiscal year. End of the year, status to report to is they have reached 40 out of 35. That's 114% accomplishment. The next agency is YWCA Glendale and Pasadena, a program called Mental Health Services for Survivals of Domestic Violence. Proposed number to be served, 25 participants. Agency has overachieved by assisting 39 participants. Total CDBG funding is $28,098. Agency has spent down their grant money. The two outcomes are the following. First is, of the 15 women served by the program, 12 women will rate the program 40 points or higher by the way of evaluation at the end of the 12-week support group. Status to report to is they have assisted 21 out of 12. That's 175% accomplished. Second outcome of the 10 children served by the program, eight children will rate the program 38 points or higher by way of a written or verbal evaluation at the end of the 15-week therapy sessions. End of this year, status to report to is they have assisted 10. Their goal was eight. That's 125% accomplished. The next agency we work is Armenian Bar Association, a program called Probono Clinical Legal Services. Proposed number to be serviced 25 individuals. Agency has overachieved by assisting 54 individuals. Total CDBG funding for this project is $20,498. Agency has spent down their grant money. The two outcomes are the following. The first one is, of the 25 participants served, the clinical will aim to reach successful disposition of the legal matters of 15 persons by the end of the fiscal year. Status to report to is 45. Their goal was 15. That's 300 accomplished. Second outcome, three out of five persons who seek expansion in clinical services from Armenian Bar will have received legal assistance through clinical services and efforts. Status to report to is 17. Their goal was five. That's 340% accomplishment. Another agency we work is Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America, a program called AESA STEAM Academy Program. Proposed number to be serviced 30 individuals. Agency has assisted 34 individuals. Total funds for this project is $10,498. Agency has spent down their CDBG grant money. The two outcomes are the following. The first one is, of the 30 students who will participate in the coding robotics classes, 15 will move up a level or higher or on or by end of the fiscal year. Status to report to is they have reached 21. Their goal was 15. Agency has accomplished 140%. Second outcome of the 30 students who will participate in a program, six will register for a formal robotics STEAM competition on or by end of the fiscal year. Status to report to is, agency has assisted eight students for this competition. Their goal was six. That's 133% accomplishment. As you can see, all of our agencies have worked really hard to submit their quarterly reportings and have overachieved their numbers and made a difference within our City of Glendale. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Okay.
One question, one comment. I don't know if you were going fast and I didn't catch you, but the Armenian Relief Society hasn't drawn down all of its funds, or did they?
They did. They did. They have, we just submitted the PowerPoint before they had, before we were running through their last invoices. But they did send down.
The other comment is more general, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when we're reviewing Zoom grants applications, do we have these reports from prior years available in there?
Chair of DCN, members of the Advisory
Um, Chair of DCN, Members of the Advisory Committee, Vice Chair Manukian. This question came up at the meeting, the last meeting in February. And yes, it does, the question exists and the question states, please give us your outcomes for the last five years. However, the committee had asked us to prepare this particular year-end report and include that in Zoom Grants this year. And that's what the staff will be doing this year for year on.
Yeah, because, um, I, I think we should consider prior year's performances in awarding future funds because when I see, for example, the Armenian Bar Associations, um, the, the, delivering of, um, results, that should be rewarded for future years.
Thank you. Question?
I have a question and a comment. Um, first, I want to acknowledge the work, the positive work that you guys have really put into this. And I think the, for example, the Youth Employment Program reached a hundred fifteen, thirteen percent and that demonstrate the quality of work with the CDBG. But since many programs rely on annual grants, uh, what strategies are in place to ensure the long-term sustainability of successful programs in the future? And are all these, um, grants a one-time grant, a recurring grant? And how many years in the timelines have we been funding all these, uh, organizations and agencies?
Chair of DCN, Members of the Advisory Committee, Committee Member Alny. Um, to answer your question or questions, I should say, uh, we, as part of the Zoom Grants proposal, there will be those questions in there for the, um, agencies. And many of the questions that you ask will be part of that. And when they come to present in February of twenty twenty-six, when they come to present to this committee, um, those questions will be asked again of them by the committee members. Now, we do present to our agencies, current and former agencies, we do present them with new grant opportunities that are, um, they, that come forth in our community or regionally. So those are sent out periodically to all our agencies. Um, do they get funds every year? Some do, some choose not to in certain years. Um, these are, uh, good questions that come up as these funds seem to be dwindling down each year. Um, these are good conversations for the committee to have and figure out how to, um, fund agencies in future years. And those questions have come up with committee member discussions such as, do we fund one year and say no the following year and then fund again? This is something that the committee has to decide on how to move forward. And this is all dependent on what our numbers are. And our numbers, again, we still don't know what we will be getting. We are anticipating one point seven million as we have in the past. But again, we're on a possible continuing resolution in September of this year.
Thank you. Sure.
You, just a general comment and then a question as well. Uh, one, all the organizations are doing a wonderful, wonderful job and, uh, and making incredible progress out there. And my question is, how do we set, how are the goals set? Do we negotiate the goals? Do we accept them? Do we check them against historical records? How do we set those goals?
Maggie smiling because, um, this is one that I'd like to answer and, and also bring to the committee's, um, attention because it is something I think we need to consider going forward. Historically, as part of their application, the agencies are supposed to provide that information in their application. How many people are they able to serve with the program that they're proposing and what would their goals and outcomes be? Uh, unfortunately, what ends up happening is, as, um, you know, that it's difficult to fund them at the levels that they're requesting. And so we always end up funding them at a lower amount than what they're originally requesting. And so during this meeting, we don't necessarily, um, ask the agency on the spot to provide a revised goal or outcome. And so what ends up happening is staff is, um, once we find out what the committee is funding, we have to go back to the agency. And unfortunately, at that point, we have to take what they're able to do with the funding that we've given them. So, um, Ms. Kavarian and I were talking about it as I was reviewing these, that, um, I'd like to again remind the committee and maybe make it a requirement that we consider this going forward and something for you to keep in mind and give us direction on as we move forward for the next year's, um, cycle is we either need to fund agencies at the amount that they're requesting or the minimum and make that the application. And if we're gonna do anything in between, then we need to find some way of asking the agencies to remain while you're, um, having your deliberation and be able to speak to that. Because if they're, for example, asking for fifty thousand and they're gonna be able to serve a hundred people with that fifty thousand, but you're only able to give them twenty-five thousand, we no longer have control over how many people can they serve with those twenty-five thousand? Because once staff goes back to them and says, you know, you saw that you were only funded twenty-five thousand, how many people could you serve? And if that number ends up being twenty versus fifty, you know, half, we, we would have to bring a report back to you again and see, is that what you had in mind by giving them twenty-five? Are you okay with them serving twenty people versus fifty people? So historically, I don't think we've had that conversation. You've given them the amount, we've, staff has gone back, we've taken their revised numbers. And then, you know, we proceed to present to the committee. But what you're seeing and reviewing the applications isn't necessarily what's ending up happening after the fact, unless you're funding them at the amount that they're requesting. So this is something to keep in mind going forward with the New Year's applications is if you want to look at, you know, how much are we, um, funding for each agency and what is that difference? What is, you know, how much are the numbers served and the goals that were presented different from what they originally submitted with their application? You know, we could always bring back a report that does the comparison for you, like looking at the applications submitted versus what we ended up with. But staff doesn't really have the, the time or the ability to negotiate those goals or outcomes after the fact because we've obviously funded them for less than what they requested. So therefore, we have to take what they're able to do with the amount that we've, um, awarded them. So we could build in some way of control for that going forward, um, whether it's, because if we, we know we have, you know, the, the application asks for how much funding are you requesting for this program and what is the minimum that you can take? But the minimum doesn't ask them, how many people could you serve with the minimum? Or are your goals and outcomes going to change? And we can add that as a question going forward. But if you don't fund them at the minimum and you fund them in between, then we still wouldn't know what their outcomes or goals could, should be at the, at the level of funding. So I think that might be something the committee should consider going forward is you're either gonna have to fund them at the amount that they're requesting or the minimum, or have some way of building a question into the application process for the next year to be able to capture that or request that the agencies remain here to be able to answer that because we wouldn't be able to say what the agencies will be able to do with the amount that we're able to fund the program.
Very good. Um, I, I would recommend that we at least ask in the original application, what that parameter is for the minimum. At least we have two parameters at that point, you know, instead of just o-only the, the one parameter at the top. And that'll give us, um, some kind of range that, that, you know, within that range and then we know the minimum. What do you think?
Um, actually, I'm okay with that. I, I like the idea. I know there's still will be a lot of gray, gray area in that. We're going back and forth because no matter what, if one number, one person or serves changes in the, the scheme of the minimum or the, the maximum that they, uh, they asked for, uh, even one person or, uh, it can, or one family can change the whole number. And then a lot of times we're actually, don't forget that, that actually when we're serving, when we, uh, providing funding for the program, we're not actually, uh, funding for the actual individuals. We're funding them for the staff members. And the staff member is the one that is gonna be able to see how much hours, how many hours they can put in and serve as many people if you have that many people coming in, you know, at your door. If you have ten people coming in and then you have, uh, I don't know, you have a ten thousand dollars, you have ten people coming in, but you're saying that I'm gonna be serving only, uh, we're gonna serve twenty people. But you don't even have the customers or clients coming in, in that sense. But at the same time, if the staff is getting, uh, part-time pay to only serve part-time, two hours a week or whatever it may be, then, uh, you can't force that staffer, hey, you have to do that number of, uh, you know, people that you need to serve because the program asks for it. So that's where the, I guess, the agency comes in and tries to, uh, manage it with their own staff and their own funds in order for them to match up and catch up with the, the number that we think. I think that's, that would be something, but it's gonna be tough. I don't think the agency is even gonna be able to give us a, even estimate. The estimate that we have is what we have.
May I respond? I think, I think, um, that's why we, if we ask them at the minimum, how much they're going to be able to do, they will respond thoughtfully. And you're right, if they, if they're an organization that has scalability like the Housing Rights Center and, and we have, you know, we give them a small amount of funding, they're still gonna have their infrastructure and all their staff there ready and it'll be easier to answer. Well, if we give you, you know, thirty versus ten, it'll be easier for them to answer versus other types of projects where it's very sensitive and it's like, you know, here we are trying to, um, remodel one bathroom versus two. You know, tho-those are, those are the smaller projects. On those smaller projects, it's gonna be very different, so.
Social service is the biggest question and I think it will be an issue. Anybody else? Sure.
Um, I agree. I think if we're asking for the full budget, how many you're going to serve, it's easy to also answer the question of what, what about the minimum budget? Um, but instead of having them wait around so that, um, we can, you know, I don't know, negotiate with them, I think that, um, other, in addition to asking in the application of how many people you can serve with the minimum requirement, is to also instruct them to be prepared to answer our questions when they're before us. Because when we come in, we've already reviewed Zoom Grants. We already know how much money there is. And, uh, you know, my experience has been that the numbers at the end, we, we kind of negotiate and come to a conclusion, but we're not that far apart. So when they're in front of us, we could ask the question that, you know what, um, ARS, you're asking for a hundred, but we can only give you sixty-five. Um, how many can you serve with sixty-five? For them to be prepared to answer that question. And I think that if they're, if they're able to answer the first question, they can answer the second and the third question.
Possible. I mean, you can put a requirement, if that's the will of the committee, I think we, we could ask the staff to add it on the application, uh, questions, one more question and, uh, give us some parameters of the higher number and the lower number and then take it from there.
Chair of this.
Yes.
Um, first of all, thank you so much for detail report. It's great. Um, I know it takes so much time to put this together. But, um, first, um, let me start with, I'm so saddened with having ten thousand dollars here and ten thousand for the amount of paperwork and the time agencies put and our staff for a ten thousand dollar grant. Uh, sometimes I think I wish they go to a, just donor and ask for that ten thousand. It'd be much less headache for the agencies than go through us. And obviously adding stuff to it, asking the agencies to give us more paperwork or, uh, request more time for them to spend on this ten thousand or twenty thousand we give compared to the work they do granted. Yes, we need it. I, I understand where we're going. Actually, before the meeting, I asked Ms. Kavarian about the reporting that we have in front of us. Last night I was going through them and I see percentage of total outcome, three hundred percent, two hundred percent. Well, that's not the right number. They didn't, it is, but in what format? Did they go three hundred percent with our ten thousand dollars? That's not what it says, right? So I can translate it, hey, guess what? I give you ten thousand dollar, you went over and above your, you know, instead of hundred percent, you did three hundred percent. So I'm giving you too much money. Maybe I should give you less. But that's not what this report is. I know it's a calendar year because it goes through the June and so on. But as Ms. Alex and I say, maybe we can compare those. But that's extra again, work for the staff just to bring it up. Plus, not every agency comes back every year. Sometimes it's a newer agency. So some agencies will have the comparison, some we won't. So where is the fairness there? It is a fine line. I understand, we all need to have that answer. But I think for the amount of funding we're giving, which unfortunately is so little, uh, if they, it's original, uh, they said ten people they serve with the money we give them, they serve three or four. I still think something that they did, it's a great job better than zero. Some agencies, as you guys know, like CASP, the amount we give them is not per, is per school, not per person, right? So, or the food bank, how do you really put the number of people for food banks? It depends what the agency does. Uh, so asking that here from the agency that, hey, you said ten, if I give you ten thousand, how about if I give you twelve thousand? How about if I give you fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars? I mean, for them to come up with number of people they're gonna serve and we put them in a spot that I don't think would be the right thing to do. Um, we can look at the track record, but again, that would be only people who've been coming back to us, not for a new agency. Uh, so I think we should come up with a, you know, more, better solution that takes less time from them and the staff. Uh, and, um, I don't know, that's where I am with this. I, I'm trying to give them less work, less paperwork, less time for ten thousand dollars.
So Chair of DCN, Members of the Committee, I think what we all need to keep in mind is that you're not, you're not necessarily funding the number of people they're serving, like all of you have suggested. It's the program that you're funding which is being leveraged with other funds. So obviously there are different factors that you take into consideration. Um, the number of people served being one of them, but the programs are so different, they're not an apples-to-apples comparison. So you can't necessarily take, um, you know, the, the Neighborhood Legal Services Program and compare it to the food bank. Or you can't take the, you know, the ARS ESL Program and compare it to the, um, Armenian Bar Association, the number of people served with legal services. So I think, um, you know, a-again, they're not an apples-to-apples comparison, but in, in your decision-making, you're essentially looking at how far can my dollars go, right, in my community? Cause you only have a certain pot of money. So if I'm able to give ten thousand dollars to this agency and they're only able to serve ten people, but ten thousand dollars to this agency, they can leverage that ten thousand with another hundred thousand and they're able to serve X number. But the services that they're providing, which one is of, of more importance in your community, right? The, the types of services, um, where your needs are in your community is, is one of the factors. But the number of people they're serving, again, if it's a, um, if your two agencies are providing the same exact service, it's easy for you to look at it and say, okay, you're both providing, um, you know, housing services and, and for ten thousand, you're able to serve this many people, but for that same ten thousand, you're able to serve more people. So maybe it is better for me to leverage your funds because you have the capacity, the funds to be able to do more. So I think it's, and I'm not suggesting keeping the agencies here. That was just one suggestion because there's no other way for staff to be able to get you back that information. Once they leave this room, you're making a decision based on what you heard here, but that's not necessarily what they're able to do with the dollars that we give. So I'm just saying that's one option if we can't find a way to put it in writing because otherwise you have to commit to funding them either at the amount they're requesting or the minimum. Because anything in between, you're again leaving it up for the agency to determine and give information to staff that we're not able to bring back to you for a decision. So either way, whatever the, the committee is comfortable with, when the time comes, obviously we'll have that application packet here. You'll have that discussion then. But something for you to keep in mind and consider between now and, um, I guess October. We'll be back next month, so.
My colleague suggested to have a number for the minimum. That's great. At least we have a minimum and a maximum. So anything else we fund in between us, we're gonna assume it's gonna be a number between those two. At least that gives us some kind of a direction. Uh, but, um, I think that's the best we can do.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I just wanna comment on, um, um, Commission Member Garibian's comments. I think we have a duty, because we're dispensing the funds. We have a duty to make sure that the funds are used appropriately and give, e-extend the services and the work as much as possible. So I don't know if there So I don't know if there's any other measure to keep the agencies in check when they take the money, what they do with it, other than having these numbers. They're arbitrary numbers. But the idea of keeping them in check, that we're, we're entrusting public funds to you to provide social services, and we need to make sure that you're doing what you promised to do. So the deliverables, I think, are important. I don't think they're, you know, they're, they might be arbitrary, and they might include results that are, are because of other funding, but it's our job. We're entrusted with these funds to dispense them in the best way possible. So I think that having deliverables is important. I think that asking them to provide deliverables for less than the total that they're asking is not a lot of paperwork. I think it's just, you know, some number crunching. So I, I would support that addition to the application process to know certain deliverables if we're not able to fund the whole.
Thank you. Yes.
I have a comment and probably a question as well. With regards to, you mentioned earlier about these agencies, that we might be funding them, giving them grants for staff. And I want to clarify, as I have a background in nonprofit, typically when we grant is that its focus is on the initiative and the program. We cannot compare them apples-to-apples, like whatever they're bringing into the table. However, as we move and make decisions moving forward, are there certain guidelines on what type of, I guess, this is the kind of money we put into this initiative, but this should not go to the operations of the nonprofit? Because there's certain things that we can fund, but I think there's only 5% of the entirety that they should present i- in terms of funding. So money that we provided, or the grant that we signed, should be specifically on the programs, not necessarily to staff. This is my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Chair of the DC, members of the committee, committee member, Ani. There are HUD guidelines on what the funds could be used for, but staffing is a category that is eligible. So for example, an agency that provides case management, so if the program entails case management, they wouldn't be able to provide that program without that salary for that case manager. So in that case, you know, we would want to and be able to fund a staffing for the program that requires staff resources to be able to provide those services. So it really depends on what the program is, or the services that the agency is offering. So there isn't necessarily a limitation that says you can't use it for staffing, but if the program is, or the, the service that they're suggesting is, for example, you know, rental assistance, we would love to see that majority of that go towards the rent, but you still need an admin person to monitor that, right? So as a committee, you can definitely add limitations that are beyond the federal, the HUD guidelines, but right now, I don't think that we have anywhere it says that the city of Glendale would like to put more stricter guidelines that go beyond the HUD guidelines, if that makes sense. So if you want to see that, as a committee, if you want to see that, you know, going forward, we'd only like to spend 25% of the funds that we're giving you on staffing. You can put that kind of limitations as a committee if you choose to. It just, we, you know, it would just be beyond what HUD is requiring, if that makes sense. So you definitely want to keep that in mind as you look at the proposals to, to see, you know, what are the services that you're offering, and could your funds actually be put towards your MNO, your maintenance and operations versus your staffing? But for some programs like case management, unfortunately, you wouldn't be able to.
If I'm not mistaken, isn't what the proposal says when they give it to us, they break it down, what the funding is needed for? Is it for staff or the director and all that stuff? So we have all that numbers.
You do.
We know where it's going to go. Now, after we give them.
No, they don't, so we don't change it. We, we obviously do allow them to modify the budget based on what you see, which is part of the whole, it goes back to the outcomes and the goals, because you're giving them less money. We have to allow them to revise their budget because we're no longer funding them at that same level, so that's, that does get revised after the fact as well. But you do see in the proposal what their original request is, so that, so we wouldn't necessarily allow them to increase their request, it usually gets decreased. But which line item it gets decreased from, I don't think we monitor or manage, but if they were to, you know, for example, if someone's requesting $30,000, and in the proposal, they said 20,000 for MNO and 10,000 for staffing, and all of a sudden they want to flip it, staff would question it. But if you're giving them less money, then obviously, we have to allow them to cut, and if they choose to cut from the MNO versus the staffing portion, again, depending on how much they're cutting, staff is probably not going to question it because we're giving them less money than they originally requested as part of their proposal.
They could have different sources of income for the parts that they'd be short from us, that's also, maybe there's a grant available for a specific program they have, and they can shuffle those monies. So policing them, that detail would be hard to do, so.
I do want to add something.
Oh, sure.
So on monthly basis, we, as CDBG staff, work with, with each of the agencies to submit invoices. Depending on what we sign as the contract between the city and the agency, if it's personnel, then the, the agency does submit time cards, copy of checks, bank statements. So that gives us the time to work with the agency to get all the required documentation submitted on a monthly basis. That is how we track the personnel. When it comes to operations such as Catholic Charities, Pantry, they submit to us on a monthly basis a list of items that they are purchasing to add to their pantry, pantry system. That also gives us a checklist of the items, a number of items that they are assisting. We also go back to the quarterly reportings to make sure. When you did mention they are overachieving, yes, they are achieving, because if there is an individual or a family member going to Catholic Charities, asking for assistance, they don't turn them back. They provide the assistance as best as they can. That's the reason why agencies have overachieved their assistance. So we do our best to work as a team with the agencies on each of their program set, depending on whatever budget that they have in our contract, whether it's personnel, operations, anything that we have agreed in our signed contract.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
And then Chair of the DC and members of the Advisory Committee, one other thing to consider, obviously, is the capacity of a lot of our agencies. Another thing to consider is when we work with them around June, after the numbers are, are given to us and they're finalized, we have to consider the fact, this is not the only funding source. They're still waiting on funding sources from other grant opportunities that probably have criteria that you've discussed today. So when they're really ironing out their budget around June, July, that's where the numbers game starts, because that's when they finally realize what they have and what they can do. It's very difficult in February to figure all of that out when everything is up in the air. And that's when they bring everything in, they know what their budget looks like, officially looks like. And a lot of the agencies that get yearly funds, they're, they're a little bit, it's a little easier for them to figure out their budget, not much changes. But those agencies that are awaiting multiple funding sources, that's when it gets a little difficult for them, and that's when we work with them.
Thank you. Any other question? Yes.
It just, it brought to mind the current political environment. Do we foresee any changes in funding?
Sorry, is your mic on?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The, the current political environment, and do we foresee any changes in funding for HUD services, community services?
Chair of the DC and members of the Advisory Committee, committee member Quinones Gabrielian, that's an excellent question. We're actually working with our legal department now. Our legal department is reviewing executive orders that were provided to us, and HUD actually sent us those executive orders that we needed to include in our consolidated plan. For those of you who were with us prior to this meeting, our consolidated plan was submitted to HUD. They came back and asked us to update that plan to include those executive orders. And at this time, our contracts are really still being processed due to that. There will be some wording changes, words like immigration, DEI-type words, that will be taken out of certain agency contexts within the contracts, in the program services that they have offered in the past, they will no longer offer. That being said, it's under review right now, so there's not much else we know other than that. So we included what they asked us to include, and we wait for the con-plan to be accepted, but it has been submitted.
Thank you. Any other question?
One thing that, Ms. Gavarian, I think one thing that we did clarify with agencies, and we did get a reminder from HUD, is that the programs are not, the HUD dollars are not to go towards programs that are serving illegal immigrants. So that is a limitation of the funds, that they want to make sure that the agencies and the programs that are being funded with HUD funds are not serving individuals. So the exact language and, and the extent of the impact with the new executive orders, like Ms. Gavarian said, is, is still under review with, with legal, but that is something that they, that they had clarified and sent out notice for.
So I have a follow-up question, and that is, when there are requirements for, you know, who these organizations are serving, so those questions are going to change. Or how, how are we going to say, are they, do they qualify? These qualification questions. Remember, we asked, what, what is it that Armenian Relief Services asks? What, what does Catholic Charities ask when folks go up to the food bank? How, they don't ask that, right? They ask for paycheck stubs, I think, or other type of information. So the qualifying questions then are going to change in the future. Is that so? How, how are we going to say, yes, these, these dollars are used as, as supposed to be used?
They have program services that they offer. We have an applicant information form that is given to each agency to fill out, which includes name, date of birth, address, signature, and then paycheck stubs, because we have to make sure that they are low to moderate income, because the criteria for HUD is low to moderate income. So those are the requirements that we ask of our agencies. What they do with the funding that's not federal is up to them. But in our contracts, we don't have the immigration language, we no longer have the DEI language, not that CDBG ever really did, but there were immigration services that were provided by a few of our agencies in the past. I hope that answers your question.
I just, I mean, it sounds like we don't foresee a change, or we don't, it, I mean, to me, it sounds like they're saying there's a change, but we're not implementing a change. I guess that's, that was my question.
I, the short answer is, the agencies are expected to follow the HUD, the HUD guidelines. And so the HUD guidelines in their agreement will say that you're not allowed to, to serve that specific population, or you have to serve individuals who, who have an immigration status. So I think will we, the, the information that we collect, because they are leveraging funds outside of HUD, so it doesn't mean that there's services that program can't serve, it just can't be the HUD dollars that are used to serve that population, if that makes sense. So as long as the, the individuals that are being served are not being served under the HUD funding sources, then it should be fine.
Okay. Thank you. And all that information, is that private information? We don't share that information?
All right.
Address, paycheck, you know, all of that.
No, we don't.
Okay.
And I have a follow-up question with that. So the budget we have right now that we're working on, 2026, '27, that is the budget we're working on, so that funding is available already?
It is actually not available yet. It's an est, we are estimating 1.7 million, and you will have a report next month in October. Usually, around this time of the year, Congress is reviewing the budget for HUD, and they're pushing it back until September 30th. There, there's a chance of a government, they always say that there is a chance of a government shutdown. If they do not decide by September 30th what the funding is, we will come back and let you know there's a continuing resolution. We estimate funding at this level, and we do have an association that we work with. The association always keeps us up to date on what the possible numbers are. The numbers right now for the House of Representatives is flat funding, what we've always gotten. The Senate right now is reviewing it and trying to reduce it by a couple of hundred million, which is actually, in the grand scheme of things, not as much as, for Glendale, that might mean $30,000 less. So at this time, there's, they're all still deliberating, they're still discussing, but by September 30th, we'll have a concrete answer. And then we'll let you know, hopefully, we haven't seen this in a while, but usually when we, when we meet in February, end of February, early March, we have our final numbers. We haven't had that in two years, but most likely, we will this year. So we will let you all know, and we keep you in the loop.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. No other question? And thank you for the report. What's next, please?
Item four, action items. At A, a selection of CDBG Advisory Committee officers. At one, a selection of chair for the term September 2025 to September 2026. And at two, a selection of vice chair for the term September 2025 to September 2026.
Okay. I guess I will entertain, I don't want to, but I will entertain a motion, or any suggestions for a chair, co-chair?
Chair of the DC, and if I may suggest that you turn the meeting over to me, so that I can.
Sorry, that's right.
Yeah.
Though, I know, I've done this a couple of times, I should remember.
That way you'll be in consideration as well. The business before the CDBG Advisory Committee is a selection of a new chair. I will now entertain nominations for that office.
I'll make nomination. Commissioner Ronnie Garibian for chair.
A second. Okay. Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I will proceed with a roll call, and you'll answer yes or no. Committee members of the DC.
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Garibian?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
And Quinones Gabrielian.
Yes.
Okay, now declare Committee Member Garibian the duly-elected chair of the CDBG Advisory Committee. And Mr. Chair, the task before you, once you get settled into your new seat, is to open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Mike. I move to nominate member, CDBG member Manukian to be our vice chair.
I second.
Any other nominations? Okay, seeing that there's no further nominations, I'll take the roll call. Committee members of the DC.
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Quinones Gabrielian?
Yes.
And Chair Garibian.
Yes.
Okay, now declare Committee Member Manukian the duly-elected vice chair of the CDBG Advisory Committee.
Congratulations. Congratulations, yeah, congratulations.
Well, I want to first thank my committee members for their trust in me. I think if I'm not mistaken, this is my eighth year on the, on the ICIS, so, and maybe my last year, by the way, just FYI, because of the term, term limit. So I appreciate it. Again, we work as one, so it doesn't matter who's the chair or not, we all work as one. I appreciate it, and I'll just go to the next item.
Item 4B is program planning schedule for the fiscal year 2026, 2027, CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan. At one is a motion to approve the program planning schedule for the fiscal year 2026, 2027, CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan.
Chair Garibian, members of the Advisory Committee, it is that time of the year, again, we're already looking at '26, '27 program planning, and I'm going to give you a brief overview of overview of what is to come this next year, and a lot of work ahead of us. So what I did was I highlighted on the PowerPoint meetings that the committee would have, so you would be aware of attendance, in-person attendance here. So we start our program planning in August and in September. And we start by looking at data analysis of census, American community survey. We prepare and make announcements of committee, community meetings in the fall. And then, of course, we meet today to basically approve this program plan. In September, we also host a CDBG open house, and we're planning that for September 17th. This is done virtually with community agencies throughout Glendale that serve the Glendale area. And then in October and November, program planning continues, where we have our in-person community meeting, which is going to be held at the Adult Recreation Center on October 1st. This is where we try and figure out what the program priorities are for the coming year, what the community wants. And then we meet on October 27th, and we present that to you as a committee. What we do is we approve the program priorities at that meeting, we approve the new proposed funding allocation plan, and we give you estimates, as I had stated earlier, we'll give you the estimated amount that we anticipate from HUD. And then we also will review and approve the '26, '27 RFP. Again, whatever we discussed regarding Zoom grants, this is a great time that where we include those questions and comments within Zoom grants, and we present that later on in November to the city council. Once the city council approves that, we'll issue the RFP to community agencies, and that notice will most likely be published mid-November, right before Thanksgiving. In December, we'll host a technical assistance workshop with agencies that are interested in applying for CDBG dollars. We'll be doing this on December 8. In January, that is the deadline. So January 9th will be our deadline to submit proposals into Zoom grants, and that is where staff start working on review and analysis of the funding proposals, and we provide a strengths and weaknesses analysis to them, and then we expect a response from these agencies. In February, that is where the committee starts doing their work. You will be reviewing those Zoom grants that include the strengths and weaknesses analysis, and all the information that you request from staff, that's when we'll be working with you quite diligently in those, in that month to prepare. We'll also be working on project descriptions with our community development department for our environmental review. And then on February 27th, we'll be hosting that all-day meeting, an all-day CDBG Advisory Committee meeting, where you'll be interviewing agencies who have applied for funding, and asking those questions, deliberating, and making funding recommendations. Now, if we anticipate more proposals than we usually get, we also have a tentative schedule of March 2nd, where the advisory committee will meet and will separate public social services from our capital improvement projects. That way, it'll give you ample time to interview the agencies. March 3rd is when we'll publish the list of recommendations made by the committee. And then in April, what we'll do is we'll be hosting a spring community meeting, where we will discuss the recommendations made by the committee, and the public has time to comment on those. We collect those comments, we collect your recommendations, and we provide that to our city council and housing authority in May as a report for them to approve and finalize the final action plan. This not only includes CDBG, but it also includes the Emergency Solutions Grant and the Home Partnership Program, which is through our community development partners. We then publish a 30-day comment period to approve the action plan. And then, this is also the time of the year where we monitor the current agencies. So in May, what we do is we monitor the current agencies that are receiving funding, and that is the time where we prepare a lot of the reports that we have in the fall for you. In June and July, we submit the action plan in June, and in July, we start the implementation of the new fiscal year with the programs. If you do approve the dates and the program planning schedule, we ask that you please approve it, and we'll send you out all those notices once it's approved, and meeting invites.
Questions?
I move.
Before we move, add one quick question. This workshop that is being done, do the agencies get a one-on-one with you guys, or it's like everyone gets to sit and listen? And how much time they spend?
Okay. So there are three things that are happening. In September, we host an open house for agencies, and this is only kind of a, kind of a, I call it the teaser, kind of like, this is what CDBG is. If you have the minimum criteria, we would consider you to apply, highly encourage you to apply.
That's virtual.
That's the virtual. That's kind of getting people who don't know about CDBG on board and what, to know what we offer. Now, in December, when we actually have the proposals sent out, or the notice sent out, in December, it is an in-person meeting, it is mandatory, the committee made it mandatory, and that was a couple of years ago. And that mandatory meeting means that you are serious about applying. You will get a link to Zoom grants after you attend that meeting, and then you can start your application process. From December to January, staff gets a lot of calls, and we work one-on-one with agencies to assist them with the proposals. So any questions that come up, anything that they need to fill out, and it's usually the ratio calculation tool, anything budget-related they have questions on, that's when we step in and assist them with that. So there is a lot of one-on-one, but that's kind of done behind closed doors, mind you. It's not really a scheduled meeting. They give us calls, we're very open to those calls, and we work with them. And usually, it's a new age.
December 8th, what happens in December?
On December 8th, it's two separate meetings. We have one for public social services, and then we have another one for capital improvement. And at that meeting, we explain to them exactly what the proposal expectations are, what they need to have, what they need to submit on time, because there are prerequisites. Again, those prerequisites come from the committee and through HUD requirements. And once they understand that, we send out an email to the folks that actually attended. We have a list, they sign in. The folks that attended that meeting all get Zoom grant links, and they start applying.
And their deadline is January?
January, I believe, 9th.
9th. So from December 8th to January 9th, they have time to finish what they have to do, all the paperwork that they have to submit, that's the time. And from September to December, it's pretty much when they think about it, and now, basic knowledge and all that.
Exactly.
But December 8th hardcore starts, January 9th, deadline.
Deadline. And to be honest, we pushed that back. It used to be the end of December, which is a terrible time of the year to ask agencies to submit a proposal. It is the holiday season. And what we did, we decided, we'll push it back a few weeks. It's harder for staff, because we have to start looking at things. We have less time to look at proposals. But I think it does make it easier in the long run for agencies to submit and to give a good proposal, rather than something that's done very quickly.
And most of the agencies, obviously, repeat agencies, so it's easier, they know what needs to be done, so it's much faster. But for a new agency, is that 30 days, including holidays, enough to go through that, especially, let's say, if it's a CIP?
That's a good question, Chair Garibian. Honestly, at times, I, at least in my opinion, sometimes the return agencies need to do more cleanup than new agencies, because new agencies start from scratch, and they come in with fresh numbers. With return agencies, sometimes those numbers are a few years old, and I do remind them, please update your numbers, please update your information, because that is very important, and that's things that we, as staff, look at, and we expect the committee to look at as well.
Thank you. Any other question?
I'll make a motion to approve the program planning schedule for the fiscal year 2026, 2027, CDBG ESG and home annual action plan.
I second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded.
I second Leonie.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll take roll call. Committee members of ADICIAN?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Quinones Gabrielian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Manukian?
Yes.
And Chair Garibian?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
What's next?
Next is foresee reprogramming $1,328,171 from Pacific Natural Grass Project from program years 2019, 2023, 2024, to PAC Ed Artificial Turf Project, and interchanging $96,587.38 from undesignated fund balance from program year 2019, with Glendale Youth Center project funds from program year 2021. And there's two motions. The first is motion to reprogram the $1,328,171 from Pacific Natural Grass Projects from program years 2019, 2023, 2024, to PAC Ed Artificial Turf Project. And the second motion is to interchange $96,587.38 from undesignated fund balance from program year 2019, with Glendale Youth Center project funds from program year 2021.
Chair Garibian, members of the advisory committee, we have a short presentation for you to explain why we want to reprogram, and why we want to interchange city and community agency CIP funds. So just to give you a little background, why we want to reprogram, and I'll start with the reprogramming first. CDBG had approved 1.3 million in funds for our Pacific Natural Grass Project, and this money sits in various program years. And the 1.3 million, what we are requesting is to take that money and to program it into Pacific Edison Artificial Turf. And I'll get into why. This is what we want, but we'll get into the why afterwards. And then the next thing we'd like to do is interchange funds, pretty much swap money. So we have $116,000 in our Glendale Youth Center CIP, Armenian Cultural Foundation Project, and this money sits in program year 21. So what we would like to do is take $96,000 of that and move it into the, and swap it with the undesignated fund balance that we have in 2019 program funds. And again, I'm going to tell you the why of that. So there are two factors. Factor one is our CDBG timeliness requirement, which is a HUD requirement. And then factor two is a seven-year period of performance expenditure requirement, also a HUD requirement that includes U.S. Department of Treasury. So we have two factors in why we want to do this. And I'll start with factor one. So there is a CDBG timeliness requirement. So HUD expects cities to be timely in expending all our funds. And timeliness is defined as maintaining our line of credit balance no greater than 1.5 times what our annual entitlement is. So if we have 1.7 million, we can't have any more than 1.5 times that in our balance. So we have to spend down these funds. Now, we do risk losing them, and every April 30th, HUD does a timeliness test. And unfortunately, in '23, '24, and '25, we were not able to meet that timeliness test. We always had more than 1.5 times that amount. We've gotten down much, because of decisions made by the committee, we have come down a lot in that balance, but we're still not there. So we are just not spending down our capital improvement funds as quickly as we anticipated. And that's why we wanted to have a plan in place to do that. So the city has to adopt more proactive measures, so we don't risk losing money. And we're risking at this time the possibility of $150,000. So what action we want to take is, if we take the money that we have in Pacific Natural Grass and move it to Pacific Edison Artificial Turf, it's going to help us spend down that money, because Pacific Edison is already in bid phase, completed, contractors onboard. We're going to start breaking ground most likely in October, and then we're going to expend funds and draw down very quickly. Whereas, Natural Grass is still in the design phase. I think it's at 60% design right now. That's going to take much longer to spend down. So holding up 1.3 million there is not going to help us spend down money. So we have a second factor. So CDBG has a seven-year period of performance. Staff tracks that seven-year period of performance to see where our pot of money is right now. And every September 30th, if we have money sitting after that seven years, the U.S. Treasury will take it. They don't ask questions, they just take it. That being said, we risk losing about $421,000 on September 30th of 2026. So we're always looking ahead, because we know how long capital projects take. So that being said, we have $324,720, which is currently sitting with Pacific Natural Grass, and then $96,000 in undesignated fund balance, money that was not spent down by other projects and projects that were completed. It's just money that's just sitting there unassigned. So we want to make sure that money doesn't go away. As I had stated earlier, we want to move money from Pacific Natural Grass to Artificial Turf, so that would take care of the $324,000. However, there's still $96,000. So what we would like to do with the $96,000 is swap it with Glendale Youth Center CIP project. That project's done, the construction is over. We just finished it last week. We've already started drawing down funds. That being said, we know the invoices are there, they're ready. All we need to do is swap program years, and that $96,000, done. Now, that will also leave $96,000 on the books for program year 2021, which the committee can reprogram come February. You are more than welcome to take that money and reprogram it to community projects or city projects. So that will be available to the committee during our deliberations when we start programming money. Fiscal impact. So approval of reprogramming, interchanging, really has no net impact on CDBG entitlement funds or the city's general fund. The money that we will be getting, if allowed, the reprogram money that is assigned to Pacific Natural Grass right now will be applied to the city's CIP general fund. So we basically are trying to safeguard $421,000 and then make sure we meet our timeliness requirement. So the recommendations are up there. Reprogram the 1.3 from Pacific Natural Grass on those, in those program years to Pacific Edison, and then interchange that $96,000. Those are the two recommendations staff has. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Maggie. Any question?
Not about your recommendation, because I agree with it, we have to do this. But how did we end up with $96,000 that were unassigned when we tried to assign every penny? How does that happen?
Excellent question. Chair Garibian, members of the advisory committee, committee member Quinones Gabrielian. The YMCA received a little over $1.2 million in CDBG funding. They completed their project, they did a great job. Thank you, Ms. Kabanchan, she was the project lead, the project management lead, and they left $96,000 on the books. So we actually have that money in that year because of that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other question?
I do have a question, but not necessarily exactly for these funds. Well, you know what, let's move this on. I'll ask a question on a different level. Go ahead.
No, no, if you had a question? I have one question. I mean, question more of, for example, the youth center or such, or the $400,000 risk, why do we have to wait this long?
Great question. Because we always work with the committee, with the agencies and with our city projects, and we're always almost there, but never quite there. But we're always a year ahead. we're always a year ahead. Again, this is a year ahead. Twenty-twenty-six is when we will lose that money. But we're one year ahead. We always plan ahead, and we always have these discussions. We did put together this timeliness schedule for HUD. We've done it twice. So it's something that we do and we anticipate. But again, we, there are unforeseen circumstances at all times. We were, we were hoping to be done with the design for Pacific Natural Grass. It's just been going longer than anticipated.
To be fair, I have to say, city has blamed also for the parks project. So it's not just the Glendale Youth Center. To mention, city is also in that line.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're, our project, especially the Pacific Natural Turf, as I mentioned earlier, that project was recommended by staff to become an artificial turf soccer field. But back in twenty-twenty-two, council voted on making it natural turf, which was fine. We went back to the drawing board by the time we received the contract, to get the contract approved. Then the architect working on the project passed away. So the consultant needed to find another architect. They gave us ninety percent drawings, I believe, about two, three months ago. We have some changes. So hopefully, they'll give us a hundred percent drawings within the next month or so, and then we'll take it into permitting.
Thank you so much.
I have a question. It's more on, please clarify it with me as a new commissioner on this program. There are long-term implications of reallocation of the budget. And another question is, what are the steps we've done to actually ensure that we met the deadline and this, you know, won't happen again in the future because the funds available and it's, you know, supposed to be spent on specific projects?
These are wonderful questions. To answer your first question, truthfully, we, there really is, CDBG is very flexible in moving money around. So within CDBG, moving money to different program years is actually encouraged by CDBG. They too don't want to give that money up to the U.S. Treasury. They want to keep it in-house in HUD and continue to get money in their budgets. So that first question you had, it's totally doable, very easy, and they recommend. The second question you had, the committee had the foresight because we've been coming to them for years and we've had this program for years. We've had city and community agencies hold on to money, continue to ask for small pockets of money, and then try to get what they need and then start the construction. That's what's kept us untimely. We could also blame the pandemic, of course. We had that timeframe of the pandemic where people didn't even go into these facilities. So they couldn't even start construction or break ground. And this part of this money does come from that pandemic year, from the pandemic years. So what the committee did a couple of years ago, and we will present it to you a little bit deeper because you are a new committee member, they made recommendations and mandatory changes. Certain agencies, so agencies who are currently in construction cannot apply for future funding until they're completed with construction. So for instance, YM, YWCA that has money right now, they're not allowed to come back and ask for money because they're already, they are, they already have CDBG funds. They have to finish that project before they can start a new project. So there are certain criteria in place that the committee put in place for that reason. There are others. I can go over them with the committee again next month. And you can see the mandatory requirements that were put in place. And I apologize, I can't remember all of them all off the top of my head, but that's the big one. Not to come back and ask for more money, to hold on to cash that could be spent on projects that are moving forward.
I have one more question, and I think it might be the accounting in me. I, I think, I feel like I'm missing the other, you know, we're moving one point three to eight million of available funds into the natural gas project. I'm sorry, into the turf, artificial turf. It just seems like there's a corresponding entry we're not making. Is that, is it just?
What? So we're taking the money that's assigned right now to natural grass, and we're moving it into artificial turf.
Right.
And the natural grass will now have money from our general fund, which was assigned to artificial turf. We're going to swap that, which is not CDBG, has nothing to do with CDBG.
We don't have to make an, a corresponding motion to do that second part?
Chair Garibian, committee member Quiñones Gabrielian?
No, council will.
So city council has authorization out of.
There's something missing here.
Okay.
You're correct. So the report, the, the report does state that the capital improvements funds from general fund are being moved from the artificial turf to the Pacific Natural Grass, but this committee does not have oversight over those funds. So when it does, when the report does go to city council, there will be a request for them to authorize that shift as well. So you're right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Of course.
Just to follow up, as far as HUD reporting goes, we had allocated certain funds for a project. So we just void that as far as documents on the HUD paperwork? What happened to the allocation we had?
So Chair Garibian, members of the advisory committee, what happens is there is, there are funds from natural grass that have been spent down for, in, with CDBG dollars. So that money will stay. That, that will still reflect. However, if, let's say, we didn't spend that down, what we do is, it's an amendment. So when we go to city council, we will amend the action plan for that year. Whatever years we had money, we will amend that action plan. So we do that on staff's side with HUD, with the HUD software. So it does reflect.
I'll move to reprogram one million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars from Pacific Natural Grass Projects from program years 2019, 2023, 2024, to Pacific Edison Artificial Turf Project. Do we do them separately or together? You can do them together if you'd like. I'll do, I'll make the second motion to interchange ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents from undesignated fund balance from program year 2019 with Glendale Youth Center projects funds from program year 2021.
I second that motion.
Committee members, Avadisian?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Quiñones Gabrielian?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Nukian?
Yes.
And Chair Garibian?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Before we finish, I have a question, if I may. It goes back to all of today's conversation to a certain level. But then again, first of all, I want to see if with this January winds and all the fires and everything else, any of our projects or any of our nonprofits have been affected? And are there programs within that, which is of course part of, part of it may be CDBG funding? One. My other question is, I think this would be more, more of a general question. If we have funded, especially on a CIP end of it, if we have funded a certain organization, and they did their projects, they finished the project or whatever, and now January second or seventh, whatever, the wind and all that issues or any kind of a natural disaster happens, and the project that we had funded, although they finished the project, but it was damaged somehow, is the CDBG, the city, the committee or organization, is any way, shape, and form liable, responsible to making sure that project that it was funded by, it's recorrected, repaired, or whatever it needs to be, or not?
This is a great question. Chair Garibian, members of the advisory committee, interestingly enough, last Friday, when we went with the Armenian Cultural Foundation for their project, which was indoors, we had a project with them, which was the solar panel project that they had a few years back. And I had noticed that a few of the solar panels had fallen off. And I had actually asked the executive board member, what's going on with the solar panels? And they said, of course, it was from the winds. And they were working with the insurance company to retrieve funds. Now, the solar panel, the energization is working on the remaining solar panels. It's just about three or four panels that were torn off during the winds. So they're working with their insurance company to retrieve funds so they can get that fixed. That really has not, we've already paid into it. Basically, we've already worked with the agency. The agency worked with the contractor. If the agency and the contractor have issues, that's in their contract and their agreement. But their project is done. Everything is working. And according to them, all is well. So to answer your question, if we don't, if they don't let us know, or if they don't inform us, we just don't know. But we do do monitorings. Now, the monitoring is done within, we have two years of monitoring that we do with capital improvement projects. After those two years, we really don't monitor them anymore. Most of the time, those agencies come back for additional funds, sort of like Armenian Cultural Foundation. We've stopped monitoring them for solar panel, but we just happened to be there for their other project, and that's where we noticed it. So after two years, really, there's not much we have oversight over, in a sense. So that's kind of our timeframe to look at the damages, or if there were damages or any questions that would come up, that would be the time that we would do it. Now, they do, they cannot sell their building, or they can't turn over a building to other, they can't use the building for other purposes other than what they have, which is public social services and community agency services and things like that. That they cannot do because they have a deed of trust with us, with the city. So they filed a deed of trust. That deed of trust is for five years. Some of them are for ten, depending on how much they have allocated in CDBG funds. But most of the time, it's about five years. So we have five years of oversight with that as well, which means they can't sell their building without us knowing.
That brings up the question that you mentioned. So if a deed of trust is recorded, so if they want to take any other financing, they have to ask for subordination, all that stuff?
Well, when, when they file for, when they file the deed of trust, there could be multiple deeds of trust. And they will come back and ask us for reconvenances if it's past the five-year period. And we've done that with a lot of agencies before, especially when we've inherited a CDBG program that we were not aware of. And so as staff, we file those reconvenances, and those are wiped off the books.
It's after five years?
After five years.
Before?
Well, we, they have to, there's not much they can do. They have to wait it out.
If they want to get financing on their projects, on their properties?
We, we cannot reconvey until the five years are up. It's part of the contract.
Not reconvey, but to do a subordination, so temporarily lifting the deed until they get financing and then put it back on.
We haven't run into that, to be honest with you. We have yet to run into that.
And of course, you file one deed per project. So if they have multiple, like RARAD in this case?
Oh, they had multiple.
They had multiple. Okay, thank you. Any question?
So, thank you for the answer and the explanation. Regardless, do we have any organization? I didn't, I wasn't even talking about the solar panels and stuff, which is a general question, because it's always in my mind, I know, some other organizations or different cities, they've had similar fundings. And the fundings, you know, you're liable, the organization is liable to keep the building intact or all that stuff, especially the funding, the amount of funding, whatever the funding was spent. And that's what I was asking, if there is organizations, any of them, that would have, have that information as, or if we, we look into it, how do we control that? If we give them money, they build something, two years later, somehow they tore it down, and they don't want to fix it. And then what? And we have already paid into it, but then the money is gone and the building or portion, portion of the building is not there where it was supposed to be, where the funding was used, to say. And I, this is hypothetical question, but I'm sure there's something has come up or would come up in down the road.
Well, aside from the one-year monitoring post-construction and the two years of quarterly reporting and review post-construction, so that's another three years, and then the deed of trust, which is five years, there's really not much after that five-year period we can do unless they sell.
Well, Ms. Garibian, it's not that there isn't much we can do. We, we, if it comes to our attention, we can definitely hold them accountable. So there is a clause in the agreement that they are to maintain it and, and at least for the period that, whether it's that five years or the ten years. So if within those five years, like you said, if, if for some reason they do tear it apart, you know, tear down what we paid for, we could essentially ask for those funds back because HUD would ask for it back from the city. So if it does come to our attention, there definitely is something we can do. We just haven't come across that because most of these agencies, you know, obviously, the improvements they make, they, it's more for the long term. But if for some reason, you know, if an agency went under, or if something happened major, and I'm sure there's clauses in there for major disasters, like if an earthquake happened and, and/or like the strong winds and, and the damage was caused by that versus, you know, neglect on their part of maintaining it, then there would be some actions we could take. And off the top of my head, I'm not sure exactly what it reads in the agreement, but we definitely would be able to go after them to at least pay back the funds if it's before the, the period that we have in the agreement.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And to add, if they do decide to sell, and if it is under that timeframe, if they're, if they sell to another agency which is doing work that's similar to theirs, we don't have to recapture those funds. So it would all depend on what the next buyer is doing with the building.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments from colleagues or staff?
I have a comment.
Sure.
First, I want to sincerely thank the staff and my fellow commissioners for a thorough and informative meeting today. As a new member of this commission, I've found this meeting to be invaluable and the opportunity to learn and about the processes, the priorities, and the challenges that comes with managing CDBG funds effectively. And I'm particularly encouraged by the level of professionalism and the collaboration I've seen today. So I appreciate that. And hearing different perspectives of experienced commissioners and staff has given me a deeper understanding of the nuances of decision-making and the impact of our work. And finally, I want to emphasize that the decisions we make here reflect the best interest of Glendale's residents and uphold the transparency and promote programs that serve our diverse neighborhoods. And I look forward to working alongside all of you to ensure that these resources have meaningful and lasting impact and contribute my perspective in support of our local collective goal. So thank you once again for welcoming me into the commission, and I look forward to working ahead.
Thank you. That's it? Nothing else? Nobody else? All right. I guess we are adjourned at three thirty-nine.